Welcome everyone from this beautiful summer evening. We'll go ahead and move to the next item, which is to approve the agenda. Motion by Mary, second by Mary, Joe. All those in favor? Move on to the third item approved. Send calendar, which is the minutes of the previous meeting. And payments and bills. That was me. So, motion by Mary, second by Doug.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Let's move on to item number four. Consider approval of facilities use agreement with Minnesota State Central Lakes College.
So, in your packet is a copy of the facilities use agreement. As the Minskew organization calls, I call it a lease agreement. But this is for the fifty-seven acres of tillable ground, both east and west of the runway on the airport property. That they've been farming for years. So, it's basically a one-year lease agreement, two thousand fifty-two dollars. Recommend approval.
No moves.
Second.
Motion by Roy, second by Blake. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to number five. Consider the first reading of ordinance five forty-four, amending section sixteen dash one sixty-one B.
So, this has to do with the pawn business and basically changing a system to the leads online. So, updating the ordinance to reflect that.
They're going digital too?
What's that?
I said they're going digital too?
Well, we have been, but I can't remember the name of the old system. Well, but there's been a change. Leads online is the new system.
I'll move ordinance number five forty-four, amending section sixteen dash one sixty-one B.
Motion by Mary?
Second.
Second by Mary, Joe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poll, same side. Motion carried. Move on to item number six. Consider approval of write-off invoice, number seven zero three seven, of fifty dollars.
So, this is a situation where an attorney's office requested a copy of video for defense of their client and never paid fifty dollars that we invoiced them. And this has been going on for years and we invoice them every month. We'd like to write it off.
Did they ever say why they're not paying it? They have an objection to it or they just don't?
We have no, you know, we can't do revenue capture against the corporation or anything like that, so. He probably spent fifty dollars invoicing. So.
Motion by Roy?
Second.
Second by Blake. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to item number seven. Review and discuss twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight capital improvement plan.
So, what I would like to do tonight on this, I'm not going to go through the whole thing line by line tonight. We'll talk about it again, probably a couple more times over the, over the summer here. But, you know, the CIP basically is, you know, trying to look at capital projects that are coming up over the next five years for the city. It's kind of a lead-in to budget discussions, you know, that will be starting. Can't believe I'm going to say this next month. Time flies. But to, you know, we've got, got a couple of new council members that haven't gone through this. So, what I'd like to do is kind of go through twenty twenty-four and then, you know, the rest of the years are pretty self-explanatory. But just to give folks kind of an idea of how we lay this out, what types of items are pretty much repeat year after year, you know, that type of thing. So, basically have this broken down and color-coded police and fire is, is the gray. You can see the stuff up on top there, so I won't, I won't go through all of them. But basically, within the fire department, mobile right radios and turnout gear. You know, those are both items that, that we try to put some money away every year so that when that stuff does get to the point that it needs to be replaced, we have some money in there to do it. We've had a lot of new, new firefighters. So, I think you're familiar with the, the grant application that we put in here about a month ago to Sourcewell for a ten thousand dollar grant that was for, for turnout here. About fifty percent of the turnout here that we needed for the new firefighters. So, you can see we've got a replacement reserve balance of thirty-eight thousand in the turnout gear. I know there's a grant application in, I can't, I don't think it's FEMA, different organization that hopefully would get additional funding for turnout here. Within the police department, updating of the squad radars in all three of the squads. Don't have an estimate yet on the panic button for the front desk, but want to look at doing that in twenty twenty-four. The forty millimeter less lethal launcher is an item that they're wanting police departments to have. That would be two launchers, total of four thousand. Replacement of the, of one of the squad computers at five thousand. Then we do have some keyless stuff at the, at the department, the back door and into the, I won't get the room right, but the doors, doors you don't want to go through at the, at the PD are, are, you know, fobs or, or badges. And want to look at doing the front door and the lobby door up there as well. Basically, you know, allows, you know, you're not re-keying everything if you have staff turn over, that type of thing. You go on the computer and remove their badge. Within parks and rec, twenty twenty-four would be a playground equipment year again. Twenty twenty-three, we're putting twenty-five thousand in. Twenty twenty-four, we propose to put twenty-five thousand in and look at doing another apparatus similar, similar to what we did last year at Lincoln and Bauer. The pavilion roof out at Bauer Lake, you got eight thousand dollars earmarked there. We've got that in this year's budget. Whether that will happen this year or not, I don't know, which is why I have it in for twenty twenty-four in here. By the time we approve the CIP, we'll have a better idea. But, you know, price of, of steel and getting a contractor to do it has, has been a challenge.
So, that, that would be fifteen grand total, then? The cost of it would be then?
No, no, it, it eight thousand.
Oh, it's seven thousand of that.
Yeah, yeah. So, we had, we had seven thousand in the, in the twenty-two budget and eight thousand in twenty-three. So, it, it's money that's already there. We just don't know if it'll be expended this year. Golf cart replacement. Our old golf cart is still going, but we do have dollars set aside. So, when that finally does, we talked about spraying for mosquitoes. The golf cart actually is doing a pretty good job of fogging for them, so. It's, it's got a limited lifespan out there. Picnic tables and garbage cans, you know, they're, garbage cans tend to last a long time. Picnic tables have a, a shorter shelf life. But one of the repeat items that we'd like to start looking at for Bauer, Pine Grove, and P, you know, anywhere where we got picnic tables is to start, you know, applying a certain amount of money every year so that we can keep our stuff updated out there. Storm shelter construction. Again, I'm hoping that happens this fall, but a lot of it's going to depend on contractor schedules and might be some this fall, some next spring. But included it in for twenty twenty-four as of right now. So, then into street, basically, you know, we have more replacements, sidewalk replacements, street overlay, seal coat, crack seal. You'll see those every year. You know, we put dollars in there. I did, in the CIP bump the street overlay maintenance up to a hundred and fifty. We've been at a hundred. We do have, with the legislature this year, there's a small cities assistance dollars that they've allocated as part of the transportation bill that will provide us some, some additional annual funding for street maintenance. So, every little bit will help.
Do we know how much more of the LGA we're going to receive?
You know the exact number?
Uh, one hundred ninety-one thousand or something.
Yeah, one hundred ninety-some thousand dollars.
Yeah, more than last year.
Yeah.
We can have a party then.
Yeah. So, back to twenty twenty-four in the street, new V plow for one of the street department trucks. And then we're considering, we've got that John Deere ten twenty-five that we do all of the sidewalks with and then in the summers it goes out to the parks. Looking at replacing that with, possibly with a Ben track, which is more of a commercial-type sidewalk machine. Community center, you know, looking at, still trying to do some stuff up there this fall with boilers and H-back. And then the, you know, remainder of improvements slated for twenty twenty-four. Light department, we've got kind of a long list here on light department, but the final expenditures related to AMI and converting to AMI. Prairie Avenue Neighborhood, Switch and Boring. I don't know, Scott, do you have a number on that one yet?
I think it's probably going to be close to fifty thousand, I think.
Okay.
I would say it's probably not going to be less than that.
Okay. And that's, that's the, the old Cano Sla Mobile Home Park, Ibs project is called Prairie Avenue. So, we've got to get electric, all those structures. The GRIP project, that's the grant application, and I won't get my acronyms right here, but the IIJA, IIJA federal funding for electric infrastructure. And we had, had some stuff at the council here a little bit ago, maybe a month ago on that. The state has also put some dollars towards matching some of that stuff. So, there's a kind of a consortium within MMUA, I believe, that applied together. Because, you know, City of Staples Municipal Electric on its own is not a viable applicant. So, a bunch of municipals went together to apply for that grant. So, anticipate that would be, you know, basically a million-dollar project with a fifty percent match on our side.
Two million, but it's been up to two.
Oh. Oh, there it is. Sorry. Yeah. So, but fifty percent match, when it comes right down to it, we, we have fifty percent of that. Generation project engineering. This goes to the Missouri River program that they're putting out there, asking their member municipal electrics to have backup generation and funding the majority of that over time. But part of that application is to actually do the engineering on it. And I think we got a feasibility study item under committee reports under Public Works related to that project too, so. The other thing for twenty twenty-four, looking at relocating the electric outside storage area. That's kind of over by the twelfth street lift station and getting that back within the Public Works facilities, you know, somewhere up around where the old wastewater treatment plant is. And basically need to pour a slab there, which will also make more room for our brush pile compost stuff near the lift station because we can't keep doing that out of the airport, so. Underground improvements, kind of a standing item that you'll see every year, fifty thousand on that. Transformer replacement, sixty thousand, replacing three-quarter ton truck, thirty-five if we can get it. Then within water, the other component of the AMI conversion, the final on that at eighty-three. Lead service line identification. I don't know, Scott, if you want to talk a little bit more about that, but we're, you know, anybody who provides water service now is required to basically go and do an assessment of your customers, you know, which often entails scheduling something going in the basement to determine if they have lead service lines.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to roll a lot of that into, you know, we have our underground infrastructure project that we'll be getting funded for next year on the south side. We'll get, we're going to put meters in with that project so those will get identified in, in the fourth street. With that project happening, those will get identified. And then when we put water lines on through the A lines, those will get identified. But we're still going to have a lot, a lot more that is, it's going to take a lot of phone calls and follow-up and letters and, you know, and then getting to the, you got to get into every single building within the city limits or within our water system and identify. We just wouldn't have the manpower, we're going to be some contractor involved for that.
Is there a timeframe on that that?
I told her.
That has to all be identified by then? And let's see, there's no way of knowing how much there is in this city, you know?
No, any, we do know that we have several galvanized service lines. And every single galvanized service line is considered, but it has a, when it comes off the main, it has what's called a boost that lead is, is flexible. So, they could come off the main with lead and then go into the galvanized pipe. So, every one of those service lines has to be considered, but.
There's a lot of galvanized service lines, I think, still.
So, that's like, it's four months from now, right? No, twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
A year and four months. Yeah, yeah, okay, well, yeah, I was thinking that was this year.
So, if it's copper, it's good?
Copper's okay. You know, but we still have to get in there, you know, because we can, we have, we have a good chunk of our services identified to the curb stop, which is copper, but that doesn't count. Because it could be galvanized or it could be lead after the curb stop.
Into dogs.
And so, all those have to be, they still have to be identified. It's kind of unprecedented because just about every water system in the state either stops at the main or stops at the curb stop. But now we have to take some accountability for, for every service line.
So, you could potentially have a copper service that you put in and still have, have lead out in the road right away between the curb stop and the main.
Anything built from probably seventy-four or five, probably at least, is all copper, I'm sure, but.
So, that would, that would be one way to kind of be able to say if the build, if the building occurred after that day. But you still wouldn't be able to go by that, or would you?
No, I don't think so. I, I have, uh, two thirds of a certain. Especially in some kind of rider.
Yeah.
It's not likely.
Well, it's a big, it's a big undertaking.
So, that'll be a project. Then we have a water department truck within the sewer, lift station cutter replacement, which you'll see, you know, kind of on an ongoing basis throughout this. Dialers for the lift station, you know, replacing those. We've got, you know, the purple one, which there's nothing up, you know, in the legend on that, but basically water sewer street, you know, that's the second street and south side underground utility project. Some improvements out at the AD building at the airport. And then we've got painting at city hall and police station, carpet at city hall and police station. Last, I think, two years we've been building a fund for that. And certain areas, it's becoming fairly soon, so. So, that's twenty twenty-four. And I, you know, like I said, I don't want to spend all night going through this tonight, but take a look at it. You kind of get the, get the gist of, of kind of the flow of things and then we'll put it on the agenda and talk some more about it in the next meeting.
So, do we have a report of how many dollars we've gotten from the local tax? That will go towards the?
Sales tax.
Sales tax?
That'd be what, one month so far?
We've got one month of one thousand dollars in, so. Hopefully that'll grow.
Hopefully so.
One month is a thousand?
Yeah, I think they had to take out some for all the work that Department of Revenue did for us.
Wasn't it projected it was going to produce, what, a hundred and twenty thousand a year?
Somewhere in that vicinity, yeah, yeah. So, next month will be a lot better.
Probably shouldn't spend, probably shouldn't spend it until we know.
Yeah, don't worry. Because they, they did, they do it as an estimate and then a cleanup. So, kind of two, you know, two installments every month. But I would think the estimate would be, you know, somewhat in the vicinity of what the total is going to be, but. So, we'll report back on that a month from now.
All right. Move on to item number eight. Consider approval of tobacco license for Staples Smoke Shop LLC at two fifteen Second Avenue Northeast.
So, a copy of the tobacco license application in here, as long, as well as a letter addressed to, to whom it may concern from Chief Burkholz. Basically, the background finds nothing that would be disqualifying related to the license.
So, does this go under the, our new regulate, that we passed? Or is this under the old?
No, this would be under the new.
Okay.
With the three hundred, you know, three hundred foot and then the whole background check provision.
Okay.
But, you know, just to be clear, you know, this is the Orton's building and that's outside of the three hundred feet, so. That's where, that's where it's at, based on those footages.
Would it be, still be outside if that school addition was done?
Um, no, it would fall within that.
You would fall within that?
Yeah. Yeah, if it was done, the walls were up.
Yeah. I entertain a motion.
Not for me.
Do I hear a motion of any kind?
Mm-hmm.
That's weird.
No motion has been identified or offered.
My understanding of this is that we have to have several reasons why, right?
Well, there would need to be some justification for not granting it. You know, the, the tobacco ordinance lays out certain items that are, you know, basis for denial, you know, most of which has to do with, with background of the applicant. The background check did not identify any of those things.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Mary, Joe. Second.
So, what do we do for a reasoning why we're not? Except if, if they're falling under all the guidelines that they have to?
What are we saying? What do we do? How do you work that?
Oh, that's a good question. I, you know, I think, I think if the council is going to deny or, or not approve, there has to be some justification given, some, some reason for it. You know, this applicant owns and operates another smoke shop down in Little Falls and, you know, everything on the background is good, so. If it's the, you know, the location, you know, we had a number of meetings where we've talked about the tobacco ordinance and the three hundred foot distance is what was determined is where we wanted to be, so.
Right. Which this body put in.
Right. And we don't even have, in our ordinance is how many tobacco licenses that we can give, so. That's not a good reason. So, this can be interesting.
Can I comment? I think part of the concern too was the THC side of the small shop business. They still have to follow the ordinance that's passed on the THC. So, just kind of note that those are the same licenses.
Yeah, the THC was still that five hundred feet, you know, so that, that would not be an available product for them to sell.
They would only use tobacco products.
Tobacco products.
And I guess my question is, we made the, we made the rules that we want them to comply with.
Right.
You know, how do we stop them?
No, and I, I'm not an attorney, but I think that unless there's some rationale for it, I think there's some liability, you know, they purchased the building and with the intent of.
Well, there would be, there would be legal action if, if we didn't.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, we need to, you know, I, I would be.
I can say I'm not an attorney, but that would not surprise me at all.
Yeah, so I'm, that's what we.
I have a question. Why, why do we even vote on these at all? If we can't deny them, why do we even mess? Why do we even have to approve? I don't understand.
That's been my question all these years.
I mean, why do we approve all these licenses if we can't, if we can't deny it?
Well, I, you know, the, the last, you know, I would say two out of the last four applications we've had for liquor and tobacco, we have denied.
Yeah, but that's because of the background check.
Yeah, because of the background check.
But I mean, that's, but, but the council has nothing to do with that. If they pass the background, we can't deny it, why does the council have to vote on it?
They mean.
The council takes the input, you know, from, in this case, Missy, with the information, you know, provided by her from the background. And, you know, based on that, made a decision, you know, previously to deny. And, you know, based on that, made a decision, you know, previously to deny. Um, you know, the, the liquor license was a similar deal.
I know.
But, so it's the council that is denying it, not administration.
But it makes.
I think we have, I think we can.
Can I talk?
Yeah.
Thank you. A license is issued for the tobacco by the city. If we can't, at this table, deny the license, why do we vote on them? It makes no sense. Because basically, if Missy approves the license or approves that they, that they meet all the criteria, why, I, I, I've thought of this a long time. Why do we vote on that? Because technically, liquor licenses we vote on, tobacco we vote on? We can't deny them. So why do we vote on them? You can only vote yes.
But, but the city lays out in advance of that vote what the rules are via ordinance.
And that's where our control comes.
We have regulatory authority within our ordinance, you know, some local control. You know, you, you know, like we just did, you know, we established distances, we established, you know, some additional language for background checks. You could theoretically limit the number of them, you can, you know, the zone that they're in, you know, all of those things. And so we've laid out what the, what the rules are.
But here's, here's my point. We get elected by the public. Individually, we all take public input from the public. And I've received a fair amount of negative im- input about this tobacco shop being a block away from the school. And I realize there's other places that sell tobacco, but, so I, I really am, I'm not really for it. And, and so, based on the input that I've had from the public. But I can't vote the way the input that the public has given me, I can't vote that way because I can't deny, because we can't deny it. So why do we vote on it?
Okay, but a month or a month and a half ago, the council, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but I think the council voted unanimously to establish a 300 foot separation, an amendment to our zoning ordinance to create some separation.
Correct.
From that. The, the 300 feet was, you know, was out there and, you know, so I, I, the, the council could have made it a thousand feet.
But that's separate from, from what we're voting on right now.
Can I say something? I'd like to speak here. I know, but I just don't want to jump on somebody. I think, Doug, that when we're establishing an ordinance for something that we are concerned about, we need to make sure that we gather the input. And the input that we gather is reflected in how we establish the ordinance so that we can meet the need of the input. For example, somebody doesn't want a smoke shop close to a school. We need to make sure when we establish the ordinance that we can safely say or do the best of our judgment, say that that particular won't happen in this instance. But we didn't do that. And so now we have a license that has gone through all the proper steps, it's gone through all the steps of the ordinance. And now we, um, we really don't have any grounds to deny it, though we still can, I believe, as a council, deny it. The next step, however, is going to be, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, Gerald, but I think what will happen is now this person who has met all of the steps will come back with legal action against the city because they have done everything that's done. So I think we can still deny it. We still have that control, but we need to think about what's going to happen because all of the steps have been taken. But I think what I'm saying is that our role as a council is to make sure that we establish an ordinance to the best of our abilities. So the input, I got input too. And we talked a couple of meetings about making this distance far enough away to avoid that, this from happening, and we didn't do it. And now we have someone who applied and they, they, for whatever, unfortunately or fortunately, meet within that requirement. So I, I think we, as a council, established ordinance through multiple meetings. We actually did not, we actually didn't, weren't able to pass the improvement of the ordinance because we had some stre- we had some discretion, some question. We came back again to meet again and we came up with the numbers again. So we actually took extra time to do it. Unfortunately, I don't think that we got it far enough away to avoid that from happening.
Well, I am also concerned about it, and that's why I will not second that motion, because it's just been a revolving person. Does that person that's applying, does he own the building or does the gentleman that applied two other times own the building?
I believe the LLC.
So Mike, I have a question, another one. Is there a law that requires us to vote to approve or, or not approve liquor licenses and tobacco licenses? Are we required by law as a council to vote yes or no to approve those licenses when both are, are, um, basically, um, under the control of our police chief? Who makes a decision whether or not they can have a license? And I think that's the question here, is that, is it, are we required as a body, as a council, to vote on liquor licenses and tobacco licenses? I mean, we, this could have, this could have occurred anytime over the last 20 years or however long Ryan's been on. And we've had other council members also that have vote, voted no on, and if you, only requires four people to vote no and, and it's not approved. But if we can't, if we, if that can happen, but in technically we can't not approve it without facing legal action possibly, then I don't understand why we have to vote on it at all.
Why, we should say something?
It was not so long ago that we, when the Dollar Store applied for a liquor license and the council turned it down and it came back to us and, and then after being explained that we had to, we had to allow this license because there was no, or, or, or give, give reasons why not, and they could not.
I know.
So, so, and you voted yes on that? I'm sure you did.
Yeah.
And, and it was, and of course I didn't, I'm not changing my vote. You, you guys know I'm not changing my vote. And, but I, but I, I do know some procedures and this, in this case, you're going to have to. Well, why don't? And it, it, you, it would. You can't change the, the format in the middle of us, in the middle of the stuff. You gotta, you gotta change the format. I've asked that question a long time ago, many times. And, uh, it just says, that's our responsibility. So. But who, what author, or what, what forces us to? The state. So if I want to vote for... So our vote really is meaningless because we don't have the ability to vote the way we want to on these, on these subjects. So it makes no sense. You're right, Doug. You, you're right, but you. Well, then why do we? But we got a procedure that we've, we have to follow. Is it a law? I mean, I, we voted on this stuff forever. We approved gambling licenses, we approved liquor licenses, and I guess, you know, the question has always been in my mind, why do we do it? Because we can't deny it, period. I mean, some of us can, but if four of the people in this, in this body deny it or vote to deny it, then you, you're saying that we could possibly face, um, litigation or, I guess.
As I understand it, the appeal process is to the court of appeals in, in a scenario like this.
Sure.
If, if, if the council, you know, I, if the council just arbitrarily decides, no, we don't like this, even though they've met the requirements as they're laid out in our I don't know how that turns out, you know?
That'd be kind of nice if we had our lawyer here now.
I was, I was just going to say, if, if we want to table this until the next meeting, and we can have our lawyer here.
Well, not to backtrack, but a while back when we were going through these ordinances, whether it's THC or tobacco, I had requested or requested information on, for grounds of denial, um, if someone does not meet the requirements, therefore their spouse cannot apply for the, the license, correct?
And that's THC.
Yeah, and I had also wanted to know if that could be changed to not only spouse, but any family member. And you said you would contact the lawyer to find out.
Which I did.
And what's the status on that? Because I never did get an update.
Oh, you, you can't just arbitrarily, you know, you know, the, I can't remember the, you know, the way it was put, but, you know, the sins of the, you know, of the brother or the father or whatever. But the, and, and that was related to THC, not the tobacco. I mean, the only, the only thing that we, you know, that we proposed changing on the tobacco stuff was the distance. And if you remember, we initially had, you know, the first version that we gave a first reading to that has, that had 500 feet from schools, churches, daycares and playgrounds with, you know, play apparatus or whatever. The council gave that a first reading. At the next meeting, the decision was made not to move forward with that. And there was a lot of discussion about distances, does it make sense for churches and playgrounds and, you know, all of that.
My specific question is, on, under grounds of denial about the family member versus spouse, why can't there be a family member? That's the answer I'm looking for here.
Well, the conversation related to that was related to the THC.
Right, and that's what I'm asking for.
But, I mean, you know, you, you got your brother that did something wrong, should that make you ineligible to, to do something? And if that's, you know, if that was a criminal type thing or whatever. You know, and that, that was the response from the attorney. You can't just have.
Right, I think that's just what I was looking for, the attorney.
Yeah, yeah. But the, you know, the, just to, to finish where I was going with that is, you know, we've, you know, the council talked about this and established for the tobacco ordinance, 300 feet from, from wall to wall. I don't have the thing right in front of me, but basically from the, the closest wall of the school building to the closest wall of the retail establishment. There was, there, as I recall, there was actually a conversation about not having any distance, but that came back in, you know, to, to have a distance from school buildings. So, I mean, a month ago or whatever it was, this is the conversation that the council had. And, you know, now we're in a situation where we have an applicant, you know, that has submitted an application, meeting the rules that we put in place. And I just don't think that's going to fare well, you know.
I move, we table till the next meeting.
We have a motion on the table though for.
I would say it died for a lack of a second.
The motion, motion, uh, for Mary Joel to consider approval for the tobacco license has died for a lack of a second.
I move to table.
Now Mary moves to table.
Undiscussed, no discussion.
I, I need a second though.
Oh, yeah.
I need a second on the motion to table the license approval for tobacco license. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Doug to table. All those in favor will probably say.
I would like to have just one more opportunity on the subject to, to say what I think that we need to have. We don't need our lawyer here for a meeting, I don't think. He's welcome to come if he wants to. But I think the question here is as simple as this. Is a city council required to vote on an application for tobacco, alcohol, gambling, any of those that are, if they're approved or can we eliminate that altogether from this body? If our police chief approves that, then it would save anything like this ever happening again. Because it's, it's somewhat controversial for us that get voted on by the people because there are people out there that are opposed to that tobacco shop going there. And they talk to us and it puts us in a precarious situation because if we can't vote no, I mean, yeah, individually we can vote no, but if we all vote no, and if it's not required by law that we approve these, then it shouldn't even be here. It should just be taken care of and licensed as issued by the city.
Sure, and I, I can check on the state statute, but what I can say is based on what's in our city code, you know, the council has, you know, basically insisted on the opportunity to approve or deny the tobacco licenses, alcohol licenses. You know, the, the state, I know on the gam- and I'm guessing it's in state law where they have basically granted that.
That was other councils that, that wasn't me.
Well, I'm just saying what's in, so, you know. And, I mean, we, you know, we're, we're required to, you know, go by the law we have on the books today. So, but I will get an answer to your question.
Okay.
All right, so a motion, Mary second, Doug to table. We've had some discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify, signify by the same sign, aye. Motion carried. All right, move on to number nine. Committee reports. First one is Staples Economic Development Authority.
Okay, hard to follow that up. Just a little lighten in. We met on May 23rd. Some of this you guys have already heard updates from, from Gerald, so I'm going to skip over some of the stuff. You'll see what I do and you'll already know the answers. So I did want to give you a bigger update or a better update on the Staples Motley Beyond Poverty Community Cleanup that the EDA partners on for that citywide cleanup day. We did get our totals. We paid for $1,308 worth of disposal fees. Thank you to all of our funders and sponsors and businesses that assisted with that, with those funds. That's all fundraised through the community and the community foundation grant also helps with that or has helped with that. We got rid of six appliances, six TV monitors or indoor monitors, passenger car tires, we got rid of three of them, one mattress and 12 pieces of furniture, so that'd be couches or chairs. And then 9,810 pounds of trash and other stuff, trash and junk. So a big, a big day. It was nine houses that we, that we assisted. And so thank you to all of our volunteers as well. It was a big job to get done that day. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update. I told you at the last meeting I would bring more detail on that, so you're the first to know, outside of me.
Do you know the grand, or Gerald said, the grand total of the whole day?
Oh, the whole day, I do.
We just saw the invoice.
The invoices are in there.
You can answer that later, Joe.
Um, we talked about the farmers' union here, so I will skip over that. The downtown revitalization, you know, the committees continue to meet and we'll, we'll start meeting. And we did just approve one application for a barn quilts expansion in the downtown area for more baturism kind of base so that people have more to look at when they're walking and doing the barn quilt trails. And that'll help get more up around town. Those dollars, I believe, was just going out to, or was approved today with the approval of the bills. And then we'll start to see more of those pop up and opportunities for businesses to get one on their business. Small cities, I know there isn't a whole lot. We're in like a lull now, it was submitted, but I did kind of. But I did kinda find out the dates of kinda, or of timeframes of when we can expect responses from them. So is that the state, they're doing the reviews likely this fall, with twenty-three here. We'll find out if we get approval. Again, it seems very, we're very confident based on the response from the state. And then if, if we get approved, the kickoff would be in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Early spring so that projects can be all put together, but about that time is when, after everybody gets their notices and everything. So, a big kickoff for that. The ARPA application to, for the, excuse me. So we talked about housing. I just have my own separate notes here. We talked about housing. We talked about the Prairie View Neighborhood, the Ice Family Neighborhood Program. Again, you guys heard all about that. Talked about the Valley View Expansion Plans. Again, you guys had just approved a, or I think agreed upon the preliminary design that was laid out and brought to you. So, the Wadena County, for those who maybe aren't aware, this is a little while ago now, since we talked in great detail about it, has allocated certain dollars for, certain amount of dollars based on population size for cities within Wadena County. The city of Staples was allocated a hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And their goal is to have that, those dollars go towards development, tax-based growth of Wadena County. And so, i.e. one of their main things is infrastructure. They wanted to see some infrastructure to get things built. And so, we just submitted our second application to them today. We go there, I wanna say it's next week or the week after, and do our presentation to them. So hopefully, they like our project. This one includes expansion in the Valley View area for some preliminary, for that final design and getting that platted. And then on top of that, we scaled back that portion of it a little bit, as a lot of it would fall into the construction of the infrastructure. And we added in some infrastructure improvements in the industrial park to really ready our shovel-ready, our sixty acres of shovel-ready, and then make the water flow better. Again, I, that's Scott, but it's definitely something that we can use in the industrial and be valuable for getting businesses to build in that area. So, all of our buildings are currently full out there, and so we do need either space or people to build that's easy and accessible and easy to choose to build on it, or expansion of some additional buildings out there that we build or something. So, that has been submitted. We'll find out more later on that. We talked about the development projects. I'm sure Gerald will go over kinda the status of each of those, the Plaza, Centia Health, and then the Berlin to Northern. And then Murray, Ron had shared that there's a couple of businesses starting in downtown. One I'm familiar with, the other one I'm not quite sure. But there is a, I forget the name of it, but like a craft quilt place that's opening where Highway Ten and Tospa used to be on Highway Ten. So we'll see a new business in there. They're not quite ready to go yet. And then one thing I did wanna mention here is I had sent out an email a while back. I didn't hear a whole lot of response on it, so I didn't progress forward, but at the EDA meeting it was discussed and we would like to, we're going to progress forward with doing tours of businesses in the community. So I think Voyager is the first one. I've been communicating with their plant manager. We're looking at scheduling it for the twenty-seventh, the same day as the EDA and City Council meeting. I don't know exactly what time. He said anytime after eleven, so I'm gonna try and figure out a good time that kinda works with people's schedules, to get out there and see what our businesses do in our community. And the City Council, EDA Board will all be welcome to come to that, so.
What day will that be?
It would be on the same day as the city, or the EDA meeting, so on the twenty-seventh. I wanna get it scheduled for later in the day as much as possible. Their floor crew, he said it was done at, I think he said two-thirty. And so, that's kinda the different schedule is that early, earlier schedule for the manufacturing plant. So, making sure we're able to get there when either there's stuff happening, so you can see how things work. Or, so the time will come out as soon as I get that figured out with them. And that is all I have, unless you have questions.
I have a major question.
Right.
Water sanitation, nine point five-three tons. Goods within the truck. Twenty-eight furniture items. SW recycling, you know, it's a lot of the appliance stuff with the, with the alder. Waste on the water, I can't. But we said a couple of generators, washers, dryers, sores, you know, a couple of big numbers, they were twelve TVs. Balls were a big thing. And then the gas station, oh, twenty-two mattresses. Five, five tires. So, mattress count is out quite a bit.
Was that our end?
Lot of stuff. That's a lot of stuff.
All right, any other questions for Melissa? Thank you. Move on to Public Works Commission.
The council and commission have expressed interest in moving ahead with generation. So, first item on the agenda here is, in order to get started with that, we need to approve a feasibility study. Basically, what that's gonna do is just kinda give us an idea of what it's gonna take, what it's gonna cost. How many generators we're going to have to line up, what kind of switching will be required, and things like that. So, in order to do that, we're gonna have to do a feasibility study. It's twenty-five thousand dollars for the study. The, and forgive my wording in the, in the agenda here, but the, the commission made the recommendation that we approve the budget amendment of twenty-five thousand dollars to capital improvement, to start the feasibility study.
And what would those generators, refresh my memory a little?
It's, so like, when we have, if, if we got an emergency alert and it said, you know, like, they're, they're asking people to, to reduce the usage, or they're asking other communities to fire up their generators to help the system, but it's also for us if, if there's, you know, an energy shortage and, and we lose power, those would be there to.
Would that be able to, would that be able to run the whole town?
Pretty much. What we would do is then we would fire up, say like the wastewater plant has its generator. We would run that generator to take some of the load off. We'd still ask people to, to cut down, but it would be, it would be enough to, to run town. We wouldn't have to roll blackouts or anything like that. What we're asking is, is enough to supply the city.
So I mentioned when we were talking about the CIP, this is a program that's actually coming from our power provider, Missouri River Electric, where I, I think they're doing a little bit of reading of the tea leaves and understanding that with the, the reduction in carbon-based generation and the increase in reliance on the solar and wind, there's a reliability issue that's coming. We've already seen some of that within, you know, MISO that we are part of, where we get our electric through. So they're, they're actually incentivizing their member cities to build generation so that they can, they can request that we fire that up and feed it onto the grid.
So what would, what would the generator run on?
Diesel. They, and they will, they will pay, they will pay us to have them. But it's, is, they're not gonna pay for themselves necessarily, but it is, it's, you know, the cities, if it's the cities wish to have that backup, cause Gerald said, they're not gonna build another coal plant.
So when, I got a little story, when two thousand hit, you know, and the area was gonna blow up there and there were all the computers, everything was out and everything, and the area was gonna shut down. The city spent about, I don't know how much money to, in the old hospital where the city all used to be, there were the old generator in the basement that hadn't seen gasoline or anything, or even started in probably thirty-five, forty years. And they spent day upon day getting this generator operational whenever they shut down. And I think when it all went in the hole, I think that went the dump truck along the rest of it. And, you know, I just wonder, is this something that, I've seen things where you buy stuff and it never, never gets used, you know?
Yeah, it's, there, there is some risk, but there, there's risk to not doing it as well. If, if the, well, like, is, I think I mentioned in the last meeting where, you know, our demand has gone up. When I first started, we were at five megawatts was our peak. Last year, we were at five point eight, and that's usually July or August is the high months. In June, or, or, I'm sorry, in May, we got up to five point two already. So, we've, you know, for a peak of five megawatts, and we're going to add, we've already basically added one more megawatt. And you think of that, how our percentage has, has gone up already. And the supply, we are going up and the supply is going down. So that's, that's the risk that, that the council needs to weigh if we wanna move forward with this. Is, are, do we think we're going to need these things to, to provide ours, ourselves with, with backup? Are we gonna be in a situation where the grid is going to shut down because the, the demand is outweighing the supply? If, if it does, and we have these things, we'll, you know, all of our citizens will still have their lights on. And all of our businesses will stay open, you know? It, it is a risk. It's, it's going to be expensive. But again, there, there is some reimbursement. There's reimbursement just for having it. For them sitting still, we will get reimbursed. When they run, we'll get reimbursed even more. Then we get reimbursed for our time and then per kilowatt that we generate, our time and fuel, I should say.
And the city will be responsible for maintenance and upkeep and.
Our staff will, will do that. They're aware, and, but I think they're, they're eager to take on the challenge. And, you know, I think they're eager to be reliable. And that's what, that's what it is, is, is the risk of reliability.
You know, for years, you would hear about the rolling blackouts in California. Now we're getting warnings of that in the Midwest, both SVP and, and MISO.
And we have seen, we've already seen warnings, you know, of, you know, in December, there was a, in December, there was a call out to, to all generators to, that were on the grid to fire up. And for everybody to pass the word to lower your consumption.
So like, Todd Valina, they service a huge area or RE or I don't know. Would they, are they gonna do that too, or is it up to the individual town to?
They're not affiliated with us. It's up to the individual towns. And as far as Staples goes, you know, we're, we're part of a joint action agency with Missouri River. They're offering this to, to their sixty-one members. When, I think it was in February when I went down for that initial meeting to discuss this. And I, I think there was thirty-some members that, that were there. There's, there's several already that have, that, that already have generation. It's just, they're, they're throwing, they're throwing a bone out there to people to start it, to add it.
What, what would the goal cost be for that project?
We have no idea. That's, that's what this is going to help us determine.
So we, I guarantee a motion to consider approval.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second.
By Roy, second by Mary. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing down, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
We've already discussed the capital improvements, so I'll, I'll move on from that. I just gave an update on, we have several projects going on right now. The, the school is doing several upgrades in both their, their elementary and their high school. We've had to do some transformer changes and some new, new feeds to the, to both buildings. Voyager is, you know, we are taking that over July. We're, we're doing it on July fifth. Since the first is a Sa- we're, we're able to take it over on the first, but that's Saturday. And obviously with the, the fourth being on Tuesday, we'll wait. And then figure we'll have a full staff on the fifth, and then Voyager will be our customer due to the, to the service territory agreement. And Lakewood, you can see, is, is moving right along, and we should be getting their, they have temporary power now. We'll be getting permanent power to them soon. They already have sewer and water hooked up. The railroad building is, is progressing, and then also one of the local contractors has said that he had been contacted about the Ascencia Clinic, so that'll be moving ahead. So a lot of, a lot of projects for us, which is good. We had, we had a water, wastewater employee has left us now. He's gone to Minnesota Rural Water. So I've advertised for that position. And then also we've had a staff member get hurt, so we're down two staff members right now. But one of them being the, the guy that does most of the street sweeping, so if.
Oh, no.
I've, I've received several calls about that, and in fact, just took another one this afternoon. So, they are, they are out sweeping. It's just that, that we had several mechanical issues with the sweeper and then, then with our employee going down. Lots of things happening. We are keeping up. We're, we're getting caught up, I should say, right now. I think they're catching their breath now.
Well, it's good to know that, so we pass it on to people if they are asking about that, so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think he, he has gotten done with the south side, so we'll be moving on to the north side with the sweeper now. You know, this happened to be in a year where there were a lot of snow events, so there is a lot of sand out there.
Yeah.
A lot of things came together. That's all I've got for you.
All right, thanks, Chuck. Any other questions? All right, if, if not, we'll move on to the open forum. Does anybody have any thing for open forum tonight?
I do. Trees. Seems like we continue to battle the care for these downtown trees every single year. I'm sure most of you can remember when I came in last year about this time to express my concerns about these trees. Fast forward a year later, through discussion with other council members and members of the community, folks that come to our store, it just seems like these trees just aren't getting taken care of. I know recently, within the last, we'll call it two weeks, I've definitely seen a lot more action on watering these trees. But it seems like the entire month of May got skipped, and we all know how warm the month of May was. And I just wanted to comment on specifically the trees that are in the concrete boulevards. I've watched some folks that have watered those trees, and not only have they watering trees, but they're watering dead trees. And so my question is, why are we wasting the time to water dead trees? Also, from a business standpoint, my sales rep was in my store yesterday from Bailey Nurseries out of St. Paul. And he walked in the door and he introduced himself again, and the first thing he said to me was, he goes, I, before I pulled up here, I, I took her, you know, I drove around town a little bit to look at your trees downtown. Cause he had known that the city had purchased some maple trees from me this, this spring, and he wanted to go look at them and some of these other trees that were downtown. And his question was, does anybody take care of these trees? And so, kinda caught me off guard and got me thinking about some of this stuff, and. And so, kind of caught me off guard and got me thinking about some of this stuff and, but obviously it adds up to what I just said about watering dead trees and not watering it off the entire month of May. I know some folks sit here and say that they get watered every single day, some of them say they get watered three times a week, and some people say they get watered three times a summer. So my question is, one, why are we watering dead trees? And two, when are we gonna actually start investing in some actual care for these trees? Um, and, and when it comes to installation of these trees, I've offered my advice on how to properly install the tree and to ensure that these trees do last, but I will also mention, backtracking on what my sales rep said, uh, yesterday, was that trees, cause he deals with cities all across the state of Minnesota who put trees in their boulevards. And he mentioned that in every city he's ever seen that has put trees into concrete boulevards, they have a, about an average of a five-year lifespan. So my question too is, why are we investing the money into putting trees in our downtown areas that consist of a concrete boulevard if they only have a lifespan of approximately five years?
If you put those trees in, you know, some of the ones that are thriving, you know, when that was done?
Well, they were done in twenty-ten, as far as the.
Cause there are, I think, I agree with you, there's some dead ones, but there are trees that are thriving downtown and they've been in there thirteen years.
And I, I would agree with that a hundred percent, but there is a lot of trees that were purchased last spring that aren't making it.
Well.
There's some trees that were purchased last fall that aren't making it. And there's already some trees that were purchased this spring that aren't making it.
We just discussed this at Park and Wrap as far as downtown.
Yep.
In the cement or whatever. And I think it was kind of a consensus around, you know, when they're done, just fill them with cement because we're spending a lot of money, a lot of time. And some of those trees, the roots are growing out through the building, you know, it's like.
Yeah, and one thing that, and I spoke to my sales rep about this last year too, and one thing that he mentioned too, when it comes to planting and specifically a cement boulevard, um, what happens over time is because cement boulevards are obviously gonna be much hotter than a grass boulevard as far as temperature, what happens is not only does that cement boulevard become a lot hotter, and when you water that tree, and if you're not digging out all of that soil and adding in fresh soil, or, there's a number of reasons why a tree needs to do, what, what a tree needs for a cement boulevard, but he also said too, whether you do that or not, what happens over time, when you water and then you get ninety-degree days, what happens is that soil does what's called girdling. And so that it, it creates air gaps in the soil, which isn't good, and it also turns into almost concrete. And so we plop this tree in here and we water it, and it heats up and then that soil does this girdling and then turns into cement and then it slowly kills our trees. And it seems like every single year we're buying X amount of trees to do this. And me personally, I would say, I would have to agree, scrap this tree idea, specifically concrete boulevard trees, and go to decorative flower pots. I get it, that's only an annual expen- or they're annuals, they're gonna die off at the end of the year, but the money that we're investing into these trees in concrete boulevards could look a lot better every single year rather than, oh, ten more trees died, ten more trees died every single year. I, I just.
The guys, city guys trying to, uh, little throw around, uh.
Yeah, and then, and then the selection of the right trees, like for example, in front of my store, not one of my trees, cause I wouldn't let it happen, but a flowering crab apple tree went in front of my store. Two things why I don't like that. One, that, that flowering crab tree's gonna leave stuff into my store and people are gonna track it all over the place. And two, that tree can't handle road salt. So it's just, it seems like we're just shooting ourselves in the foot every single time we go to invest in these trees, specifically talking the concrete boulevard trees. And so that is one thing that's really seemed to be irritating me lately, along with watching a truck water a dead tree. Seems like a waste of time, in my opinion.
The residential area, you know, they seem to be doing pretty, other than mine, they water every day.
Right, yeah, and that's, uh, you know, and we, we, I mean, we've talked about this, you know, why does the one?
Exactly.
You know, here do well and the one seventy-five feet away, it died repeatedly. You know, they're getting the same water, they're getting the same sun. You know, why is the, the tree that's, you know, that's.
Right, and I a hundred percent agree that the residential area, like I'm all for trees in the residential areas. And I'd love to be able to see trees downtown, but it just does not work in concrete boulevards. And I think it's, it's time that we scrap that idea.
Well, that, you know, like Mary Joseph, that's what we were talking about a couple of firsts. I'd just soon never talk about boulevard trees again, honestly, but, you know.
I tell you what, I talked to my daughter-in-law and it is, I, I didn't talk to any of the town, but Saint, she's a clerk at Saint Michael's, a clerk. And, um, Saint Michael no longer allows trees to be planted in the boulevards. And you can drive around town and you can see why. I mean, there's sidewalks pushed out, there's curbs pushed out, um, they're underneath wires, uh, grown up in the, in the electrical wires. Um, I've mentioned this to Scott at time, um, they'll, they'll give you a tree to put in your yard, but to, and I think, I, I think, um, Crystal Newhold is saying, they don't plant on the boulevard anymore because they ruin more stuff than they, than they ever, you know? And, and they don't get taken care of, they don't get trimmed. I mean, I can drive around town here, there's all kinds of boulevard trees. I trim mine, but a lot of people don't, they're not going to, and no matter what you do, and, uh, but one thing that is responsible to the property owner is if your boulevard tree pushes the sidewalk up, the property owner has to pay to fix that sidewalk. And that's.
Here we, the city does that. The, the, it's been, uh, yeah, practice that when, when a boulevard tree does push up the sidewalk, the city does that. And normally the, the property owner is responsible for their sidewalk, but if it's, it's a boulevard tree.
Is that, is that anything you've done or?
No, that was, that was, uh, practice when, when I got here and I've, I've been following it.
I don't remember what.
Cause I thought that the people had to go.
Yeah.
I thought the people had to pay for that.
I'd, I'd been, yeah, no, I, I, I mean, I do, uh, like a.
Record.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a, there's a block, two hundred block of either McKinley or Roosevelt, that the whole block is the sidewalk and the, and the, um, yeah.
So, I, I'd, I'd like to go back and focus specifically on the downtown tree grates. And because, you know, we have cemented some of those in, I'll tell you, I've got plenty of flack about doing that. So I want, you know, before we go and start yanking the dead trees out and cementing those, I want the council to say, do it.
I'm not, for that, I just wanna go on the record. I'm not for cementing in squares, so.
Well, I guess when you plant a new tree in there every year.
Our trees are, your trees are.
My recommendation is to move forward on cementing these, these ones that hold dead trees with intentions of replacing with a nice decorative something, whether it be flowers or anything other than something decorative. And I'll be honest, we've seen these planters over the last few years, they have a lot of potential and you have to keep them to so little. And so if it were to move forward on yanking the trees and cementing it, then it has to be said that with the intentions of replacing it with something that's going to thrive there rather than just more sidewalk.
Sculptures could be, I was just gonna bring up, I'm not sure if it's my place to talk right now, but, um, but you know, maybe the downtown group could kind of talk about the beautification group, about what could replace that? Um, if it's some flowers, if there's some sculpture, some sort of theme we'd wanna put in that?
Right.
Um, you know, we could look at.
In, in regards to kind of flowers too, I know there's been some talk, but there's never a guarantee of it, but I know there has been some talk of recreating what, what if I, someone that used to be a garden club, you know, within our community.
It's probably.
Yeah, and so it's, I've been hearing word of that, but it's just a matter of somebody kickstarting it, yeah, and people do so. So obviously I'm sure if that were to take place, it would be very beneficial for the community, but, um, you know, specifically speaking of holding the trees and cementing them, I just hope that it's written somewhere or people know that there's intentions of replacing it with something, you know?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, here, here, here you got it, you know, if you're planting these trees and, and they're growing, the roots, they head for the water. I don't care where you plant them, they head for the water and what's got water, sewer pipes and water, water lines. And you're planting them on top of them and, and right next to them and it, you know, it does a lot of damage and, and it, and it, uh, I don't know, if the boulevard trees grab somebody's sewer line, does any pay for that?
No, no, but if you had a, if you had a PVC sewer line, you know, the roots are.
Cause I know when they.
It's just likely to get in there.
In, I, I'm, they put a couple sticks in my, in my lot there by my building and, uh, one of them, they were probably within a foot and a half of that, uh, of the water connection. And it, you know, and I, I, you know, I, I like the idea, but on the other hand, I, I, I don't know, I think we need to take some time and discuss that.
Maybe we could put that on, on agenda or something to discuss.
The, the downtown grates, is that what we're putting on the agenda?
I don't know.
Wasn't somebody in the room asking the residents to water those new trees?
Yeah, they didn't, um, they see it was gonna.
It come down September.
Because I know the city's been coming, but she was gonna tell him to. We got three of them, no, not our lot, but on the block that I've been hauling watered because the city, well, shut the sidewalk, well, they're gathered. So.
So like the other thing is, you know, that we are, this is another topic about the pots are gonna be on.
Yeah, so it's in regards to, I'm sure that you've seen that the downtown planters have been planted, but the highway tenants aren't done yet. Uh, main reason behind that is when I leave that group and I've been extremely busy these last few weeks, and so we just haven't had the time to do it, so. But the plan as of right now is next Wednesday evening to go tackle that project. If we have enough folks that show up and do wanna help out, that'd be great. Um, if not, no concern, cause our group sounds like we've got a lot of folks in our group that are willing to come, but we're gonna start that on next Wednesday. It might take more than one night, which we totally understand, but, um, so we've got some stuff in the works as far as what's gonna happen there, um, but we're gonna meet next Wednesday, as I said, at five thirty PM in the parking lot there at half up and start cleaning them up and getting them ready to go, so hopefully we can knock it all off in the night, but we'll see.
All right. Move on to city administrator's report.
Yeah, uh, before we, before we move on, I just wanna, we, we are gonna go and identify, you know, we've got some trees that are in a weird state where there're buds on the branches, but there's no leaves yet at this point. Uh, but we're, we're gonna kind of scrape on the bark on a branch and find out if it's dead, you know, dried up and dead. But I think the ones, you know, the, the ones that are identified as dead, we'll pull them, we'll set a flower pot on them, um, like we have before for now. And then, you know, we'll revisit the conversation about cementing all those. Some of those have had four trees planted in them.
Yeah.
One in America Tower and then one right next to him, just west of him. They both asked if I would bring it up, all the trees, second time they've been replaced in the house.
Yeah. Yeah, like, and, and like I say, there's, you know, I never realized trees would be so controversial.
Oh, yeah.
You know, cause there's people that just, you know, uh, they'll be upset that we, you know, that we don't plant them and, but, you know, I say, it's a mystery to me why some seem to thrive down there and others, others don't. They're getting the same, the same care, you know, if they're on the same side of the street, they're getting the same sunlight, shade, I have no idea.
I'm not sure who's in charge of the water, but he just asked whoever is watering to not sit there and water the dead trees.
We didn't, we didn't know that, uh, we got a picture today and I'm sure that he was doing it with, using his best judgment, not, I mean, thinking that it might have a chance. We'll check if they're dead. And if they're truly dead, then we'll tell them not to water those particular ones, but I'll go out and identify them.
I'm gonna make sure that it's addressed. Some folks are always saying, why are they wasting time on watering dead trees? It's not being the best of the doubt of it.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying, we, you know, I think, I, I think where we've been, you know, up till now is, you know, boy, I hope they're just dormant, they're gonna come, you know, come back to life. And, you know, you know, if you don't water them, they're dead, so. Anyway, all right, enough to talk about.
Move on to city administrator's report.
So just, uh, a few things here, um, I think between some of the stuff Melissa was talking about and Scott, you know, projects again, um, you know, Ascencia Clinic, we've got building permit that's being reviewed, BNSF, you can see the structure, uh, up over there, uh, Lakewood Plaza, lots of masonry work, you know, kind of get an idea of what it's all gonna look like down there now. Uh, Prairie View Neighborhood, uh, other than identifying where existing utilities are, uh, since three weeks ago when the Ives were up here and did their presentation, you know, we haven't had a whole lot more conversation, but they have a lot better idea of what they have to work with up there, uh, right now. Walls are up, um, precast walls at the elementary, if you haven't been by there.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, big crane. So, um, and then the school project, you know, they've got that, that fenced and, you know, they're going to town in there inside the building too, so, um, lots of activity. The, I talked a little bit, um, last. Um, at the, at last meeting, just about, um, the Westland session. And we, we actually came up a couple of issues over here, uh, updating. Not, you know, it doesn't have Staples specific stuff, you know, LGA and small cities assistance aid type, you know, dollar amounts in here, um, but it does touch on, you know, all of the various things that I think have the potential to impact, uh, Staples. Um, you know, not, you know, not saying that as a good thing or a bad thing, we'll start with some of both, uh, in here, but, uh, the, you know, obviously we've got the cannabis thing, uh, that'll be coming down the pipe, uh, some of it, you know, from a possession or, or use type thing, um, I think in August. Uh, other stuff won't be until, um, I think January of twenty-five, the retail aspect of it. Um, you know, the, the sick, um, you gotta get the right terminology here. I always wanna call it family medical leave, but it's not.
Paid family and medical.
Paid family and medical leave, yes. So, um, Department of Employment and Economic Development is gonna be creating this state-administered, uh, leave program. Um, that will affect us, you know, that's gonna be an employer and employee type contribution, uh, deal, uh, twelve weeks paid medical or family leave up to twenty weeks combined, uh, annually. Uh, we'll learn, learn more details about that and, you know, we're going into our labor agreement, uh, negotiations here this fall. And, um, there's, there'll be all kinds of things as a result of this that are gonna end up being incorporated, uh, into that. Uh, some opportunities for, uh, some housing dollars, they did create a new, um, uh, housing infrastructure, um, grant program. It's kind of underfunded, I think, in my opinion, but eight million dollars between the bonding bill and what was allocated, so we're keeping an eye on that and, uh, I think that may be an opportunity for that Outlaw A up in Valley View to, you know, get a little bit of money, uh, to help offset the cost of that. Um, it's public safety, uh, money, one-time money that, uh, that came out. The IIJA infrastructure investment and jobs, that, you know, that's the, what I referred to earlier as far as the state. The IIJA infrastructure investment and jobs, that, you know, that's the, what I referred to earlier as far as the state, there's some state matching dollars on that, um, transportation, um, you know, some dedicated, I think the gas tax went up, it's tied to, or will go up, it's tied to inflation. There's the small cities assistance type stuff, um, you know, there's gonna be a, a new fifty cent retail delivery fee on purchase over a hundred dollars. So, uh, watch how you, watch what you buy. But, uh, so there's lots of, lots of things that are gonna kinda filter in here, um, that, uh, we'll be, we'll be dealing with, but, um, you know, the transportation deal, the, the old gas tax system clearly wasn't keeping up. So we'll see how it all pans out, but this, you know, I think is a pretty good summary. It doesn't have a lot of, you know, a lot of meat on the bones, but it gives you a pretty fair idea of, uh, of the scope of, of what we're gonna be having to deal with here over the next year or so, as we figure it all out, so. That is all I have unless you guys have anything else.
Move that way, John.
Move my voice like my marriage to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Yelling to them.